I'd like to help the meeting to order. Please join us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, Mr. Speaker. Okay, we need a motion and a second to accept the agenda.
We have the motion to accept the agenda, permit?
I'll second. All in favor of accepting the agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Again, same sign. Motion passes to accept the agenda. Okay, so we're gonna move on to the open forum, and we have one person signed up. Cheryl, nice to see you. Come on up.
Hi, everybody. I am here as a fourth grade teacher from Taylor's Falls Elementary, and I'm also representing Lake Side teachers as well, fifth grade. We have a field trip in our fifth grade curriculum called JA Biscom, and that's where our students go and they run the city for a day, and they apply for jobs, do a first, second, and third choice job, and they get hired, and they go and they have to work in their business for a week leading up to that, like as a business team, and we usually have about sixteen businesses that run per level. So when Lakeside goes, they do two levels, because they have, because we have so many fifth graders, and Taylor's Falls has to take their fourth graders, because we don't have enough fifth graders to actually fill the businesses. So instead of trying to cross with another district in another city, we just take our fourth graders, our kids, two years in a row, and we are looking for volunteers. We need two volunteers per business, and do the math, that's thirty-two volunteers. Do the math even further for Lakeside, that's sixty-four volunteers that they need, and we generally have a lot of parents that will sign up and come with us. We have in the past brought, you know, retired schoolteachers. Jeff went with us last year. He, I think he actually injured himself a little bit, but it was okay.
That's probably why.
Yeah, that's right.
There's a parent in the room that went too.
Yeah.
There's a grandma.
Yeah, that's right, you did go, Jody. So anyways, what we want to do, I checked with Brenda Savaro at Lakeside, we would like to open it up to the board for you to join us on one of those days or both of those days. We promise to give you the best group ever, in the best business, maybe not, but we would love for you guys to join us. Taylor's Falls is going on Friday, April twenty-eighth, and Lakeside is going on Thursday, May fourth, and there is a little bit of training to it, but you can do it all online, and we do have to do a background check and all that business, so we would need to know about a month ahead of time if you're interested in going with us, even more if you would like to, like, email me and say, yes, sign me up. So if you would like to come, or you know any neighbors or friends or family members that would like to come as well with you, we would greatly, we would welcome you with open arms, and it's an experience, and I think it would be great for you as board members to see our students in action, our Taylor's Falls fourth and fifth graders, Lakeside fifth graders, so, because they, this is one of the most memorable field trips for the students ever. When I talk to graduating seniors, I sometimes ask them, what field trip do you remember the most from elementary school? And probably at least half the time, it is JA Biscom. So we would love to have you come and join us.
Thanks for the invitation.
Thank you.
Okay, so Cheryl, should we just email you or Brenda or your students?
Yep, absolutely.
All right, let's move on to communication items. Attached to Wordbook tonight, I put the new board committee appointments and assignments, and hopefully you had a chance to look them over, I sent them to you in advance. I also sent them out to the administrators just a little while ago, so that if they're in charge of certain committees, they can let you know when the meetings are. So were there any questions or comments? Oh, one addition over the last week or two, after we finished negotiations with our Local Two Eighty-Four, there was some talk about potentially adding a sort of labor relations meeting, similar to a meet and confer with the certified group, so I added on there just in case that gets established, that Jeff would be the board representative, since he is on the non-certified negotiations team and someone with some experience. So that was added. Anything else?
One thing I'll do with the committee assignments that each of you were assigned to, as a building rep, I'll send out a sheet that I went through with all of you in the board training that talks about what is the role of a building rep, what do you do in that, so I'll send that out to the administrators and to those board members, and again, remind you, so, and the board rep at Taylor's Falls, what does that mean? And that type of thing, so I'll send it out, sorry I didn't have that, you all have that as well, so I'll do that tomorrow, or today.
And then one other comment about the meet and confer for non-certified, Jeff and I talked about possibly doing it together for a while.
Want to say that or not, but I.
I think it's fine to say.
Because we've never done anything like that before, I think it'd be good that people came up to us as a chair and asked a non-certified negotiator, so.
Yeah, unless that breaks some rule that we don't know about, that's the plan. And then the other thing I was gonna say is for Jen and Josh, I have you both listed for spread. I think usually there's someone who goes, and then there's a backup, and they can't go.
Exactly.
Because I don't know that it's okay if two people go.
Right, it's just one.
It's just.
And then there's a backup.
So if you have strong feelings about, oh, I definitely wanna be the person that normally goes, or I would just rather be the alternative, we can talk about that, but I just knew you were both interested, so I could just go.
They do have one, you know, it's the one consistent person, and then you said the other, so if you wanna flip a coin, or if you wanna do it, whoever's, then well, there'd be the consistent one for spread, and then the backup, you're unable to make it.
Is it once a month?
Once a month, I've been a backup, but yeah, it's only one person, once a month of the legislative.
Yeah, and then as far as the meet and confer for non-certified, I do have just a little advice from our legal counsel that I'll share with, in terms of the makeup of that, because that is governed by state statute.
Okay.
And then, again, it's for certified staff is what that's governed by, but you can do a collaboration with non-certified staff, just as governed by the state statute. That makes sense, I'll provide that.
Okay, we'll get more information.
Okay.
I mostly put it there as like a placeholder, in case it happened.
The main thing is, yes, it's a point discussed, you want to be able to just have it open dialogue on that, in a regular fashion like we do with our teacher meeting paper, and that's, that's perfectly fine. If it's certain experience, that is exactly what we want.
Perfect, thank you for checking. Okay, Robin, it's time for the updates.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board.
Share, do you have that on the table?
Oh, no, sorry. Well, I'll just run through it really quick, so, under the general fund, we are at fifty-one percent in revenue compared to fifty percent last year, so we're right on track there. Expenditures were a little higher again this year, fifty-five percent compared to forty-five percent, and again, once again, I've said this every month, that's because of our construction and our traffic expenses, so once we do a revised budget, we'll get those all straightened out. They were supposed to be paid in, or we thought they were gonna be paid in February twenty-two, and they were very over that one, just because they were here in August and September. Food service, our revenue's a little bit lower right now, and that's because of federal, we got a lot of federal money last year, with the federal government paying for a lot of, because our students and families didn't have to pay for their lunches, the federal government paid for it, so that's a little bit lower now that families are paying for it again, expenditures right on track there. Community service, our revenue's quite a bit higher, seventy-three percent compared to sixty-one percent, that's mainly fees, because we're open and have everything running again, and so our fees there, and expenditures are a little bit higher as well, makes sense. We got things open, we're paying people to be there as well. In our debt service fund, we have completely recognized all of our revenue for the year, and we've also paid our bonds off. We make payments in August, and we make payments in February, so our bonds are paid for the year as well, so we're a hundred percent there. Anybody have any questions on anything? I am meeting with the three new board members tomorrow morning, seven AM sharp. I'll try and get you early enough with some classes for you too, and to go through some finance one-on-one, and you guys are, you're so lucky. It'll be a remedy. I am pumped.
I'm good, so am I.
It's a quite a change from last year with all the federal funding, now some of that money's still rolling into this year.
Yep, we're using a lot of federal money this year, we're gonna talk a little bit about, I'll probably give you a lot of documents, I'll talk them out, and let you kind of absorb some of it, maybe we'll have to meet again and talk about.
Anything stand out different from last year to this year?
Not for what I do.
Just where we're at.
Yeah, not for what I do.
Other than career, yeah?
Yes. Yep, and food service is a little bit different now, too, with families paying again, we can talk about this. We'll see where that comes, fully paid meals again, we'll see if that passes through legislation.
And that's all I have, thank you. Thanks, Robin. Okay, Anna, what do you, do you have an update for us?
I do, a little bit, it's really short, so basically, the high school, it's still a week, just kind of a week, that's more like homecoming, where we have some winter sports, but we don't really have like a singular sport that we focus on, but it's just to kind of, in the school go-together. We've had dress days this whole week, Wednesday was Monday, Tuesday was Sunday day, yesterday was lumberjack day, just like, little day, just a little cold day. Thursday, today was jersey day, and tomorrow's whiteout, just like, a bunch of snow. The best we had was powder buff, which is like boys playing volleyball. That was last night, I wasn't able to make it, so I, I've heard it by pretty well, but it would have had bigger numbers of attendance. We'll have to do more on that next year. We have a pep fest tomorrow, which I hope it goes pretty well, and we have City Hawkins, Hawkins, City Hawkins, that's, sorry, I've started, and that's pretty much all I have.
Well, that's fun stuff to update us on. All right, thank you.
It's a big whiteout tomorrow.
Yeah.
So everybody can white out tomorrow.
Okay. We'll move, we'll move on to board committee updates. Anyone that's attending committee meetings that they'd like to update us on?
No, I think, I mean, we did finish our negotiations this week, I don't know if any, you want to speak to that, Jeff?
Well, ISB Two One Four Four has reached a tentative agreement with Local Two Eighty-Four. And I think, you know, I have not done that before, I was with food service, and I haven't done it, you know, just because I'm the one on the board from this perspective, and I think there was a lot of opportunity to get to know each other, and to kind of develop a relationship, I think, and I kept thinking at least twice, they came in to talk to us kind of in a sidebar that I think was very helpful, kind of move along the process, and, you know, I think out of that chelly suggested it, but I think we've been thinking about it, just that whole having meet and confer, to try to not wait till two years are up before we sit down and talk, and there's some things we probably could make that process go a little bit better as far as understanding and relationship with each other, but we reached a tentative agreement, so. And the board, I will see, I think, the specifics of that soon.
In March.
Well, we'll look to prove it, we'll have that in Wordbook at least a week in advance, but we're working on the final edits to the actual agreement, which is many pages, but takes some time to go, so we'll work through that, and then we'll have that in the March sixteenth, or the, but have it on a few prior.
The finance committee met as well, Brenda, Jeff, and I, just to talk about some initial things with how the budget's looking for next year, and we will, as a board, get more specific information about that at our March meeting as well, and then we'll have to set, later on, we'll be setting another meeting in March to accept final budget reductions that are to be made, so. I left on that, that meeting. Any other committee meetings or appointments?
Last week I went to the spread, I did go to that. It's pretty phenomenal what those guys are doing, so they gave an update, they got some new things going on from the website. I didn't realize they had a podcast, Slice of S E L, I didn't listen to it, it's pretty good, so we got a lot of cool things going on there, I'm excited to get more involved with it and see what they, they're doing some great stuff, they're getting some national recognition with the program that they're offering, and they got some solid stuff, so.
And I think where, was there an opportunity where you're gonna get kind of a little one-on-one for spread, or are you ready to have that?
That's coming up, yeah. So they're gonna, I think it's gonna be virtual.
Okay.
Yeah, and it's gonna be recorded, so we'll be able to see that at our meetings.
Okay, excellent.
All right, thanks. All right, we have an enrollment snapshot that's attached tonight, is there anyone who wants to speak to that at all?
I'd send some background to the, to the school board, you know, previously, just saying that this is typically the time of year where we're gonna see an enrollment drop, that semester changeover, as we have typically seniors who are looking to find credits in a way to graduate on time, and so we did have a larger drop at semester changeover time, so that was anticipated.
And then we'll move right into superintendent updates.
Yeah, some, well, some great things to celebrate, a couple Mondays ago, we had the music extravaganza out in the, in the large gym, four hundred three musicians, and a really wonderful night of music. One highlight that I always see is when Mr. Delisi mentions all the things that our musicians do outside of the music program and in the community, and highlights all the things that are involved, and I thought that was really a nice night. Last Friday, we had the Halloween induction with six new members conducted into the Wildcat Halloween, that was a great event as well, Cory was there, Jeff was there, and I'm sure for you all, it probably felt really good to see these people coming back that you had a chance to teach and coach and work with, and that type of thing, but really a talented group of Wildcat alumni conducted into the Halloween, so that, that was a huge celebration positive thing. We also, as mentioned, the TA with our Local Twenty-Fours, a pretty good highlight. Today in this room, we had what we have referred to as our state schools collaboration with the county, county partners, so Health and Human Services, probation, truancy, county attorney's office, county sheriff's department, LAPD, we get together with all of our administrators and those members from our county who help provide services to our students and families, and we collaborate and talk about how to problem solve challenges and issues and things like that, and certainly one of the things that we talked about is we continue to have challenges with baby in our schools, we continue to have challenges with the THC's dummies and the laws that are pretty open right now, or I guess the availability of things are reopened, so, bit of a conversation today about what happens when referrals are sent to the county, who intervenes there, and what do the courts do, and what do the parents do, engage in that process, and so that's something we started a couple years ago, and it was quite the lively conversation today, and after it was done, people still stuck around for about fifteen minutes, just making connections with people, because a lot of times you will send in a referral to the county, you're sending it to an email that's attached to a person that you've never met, and so our goal is to go face-to-face and talk things through and say, oh, okay, this is the person that, that receives these reports, so now we can talk through some of the particulars and issues that come with that, and we think that really has created a great dynamic with services for our students through the county. So those are some celebrations, some highlights, some challenges that we have, and opportunities, I shouldn't say always challenges, but challenges and opportunities. We will have our human resources interviews on Monday, so that's an opportunity for us to meet five great candidates for that opportunity. As was mentioned, we have some budget work to do, we have some budget adjustments to make in order to continue to keep us in the right spot when it comes to our overall budget, so we'll be talking about that in the next few weeks. We're hoping to have a website sneak peek for you tonight, but the website, we're switching over, as you know, on March thirteenth, we'll be switching over to a new, more user-friendly, easier to navigate website, Michelle Fies has been working hard on that, they've asked her to stay out of it this week, so they can do a lot of populating of the data, she was hoping to show that tonight, but we'll show that when it's ready, basically, is when we'll have a chance. Home show, sign up, if you haven't looked at that yet, we do need some board members to sign up for some of the open slots at the home show coming up here at the end of the month, it is celebration of the lakes this weekend, so hopefully you get a chance to get out something there. There'll be Pulp and dancing Saturday night, I highly recommend it, and Deutschling will be serving, so that would be good, and then, we don't get an opportunity during School Board Recognition Week to recognize all of you, but February twenty to twenty-four is School Board Recognition, or School Board Appreciation Week across the state of Minnesota. I think maybe you know some of these statistics too, but I think there's over four hundred new school board members in the state of Minnesota this year, and I don't need to tell all of you, especially those who've been here for a while, that this is not an easy job that you have, but we do wanna appreciate you, there's some cards and things like that, and I heard a phrase from, from the director of MSDA, he said that, "School boards are no longer just about buses, ballgames, and budgets." That's what it was like twenty years ago, and it's far more complicated than that today. So thank you for what you do, but as we know, strong schools upgrade strong communities, and we're trying to work schools, and we appreciate that, so, thank you for your work. But that's all I have, unless you have a question or comment or anything about.
I just wanna comment, you know, when I was an SRO, I certainly appreciated the concept that you brought with you during your tenure of that meeting, the multi-jurisdictional. We hadn't done anything quite like that during my time before your arrival, so I just, I wanted to share my appreciation for having the benefit that I saw during that time, and I can see that the benefit continues, so thank you for that.
Yeah, absolutely, our administration does a great job, so, good to bring you in with our county partners, do a great job, so thanks for that.
How often do you meet with the county partners?
We meet from four times, or three times during the school year, and then we do an August meeting, that's all about the school we got, and then, I had shared this before, but we do a really important meeting with all of the law enforcement folks related to emergency response, and SWAT team commander, and members of that team, and we talk about lockdowns, and school threat assessments, and all those things, and that's a really important one, one for us too, so we do an act, we do six gatherings during the year, but, or five during the year, but three during the school year, so.
Thanks. All right, we're moving on to the consent agenda. Hopefully you've had a chance to look over there. We'll eventually need a motion to accept a consent agenda. A lot in there this week. Do we have a motion to accept a consent agenda?
Oh, motion.
Please accept that.
I'll second.
All in favor of accepting the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Again, same sign. Motion passes to accept the consent agenda. All right, we're on to old business, not at this time that I see, and then new business, so we have an update from Tracy from Treeville Charter School.
Hi, Tracy.
Hi, good evening, Madam Chair, board members. So this is my yearly visit, I'm Tracy Corsterman, I'm the director at Wolf Creek Online High School, so, I'm not sure with new school board members, if you're aware, but Shasago Lake Schools is the authorizer of Wolf Creek, so we're a public school, we're not a part of Shasago Lake Schools, we're our own public school, our district number is actually four-zero-nine-five, we're right down the street on Liberty Lane, across from the Rotary Bar, and we have had a relationship with Shasago Lakes authorizing us for the past twenty years, we had our twenty year anniversary in June, so it's our twenty-first year, so we're an online learning entity, and we just appreciate Shasago Lakes authorizing and the support from Superintendent Genison, and we work really closely with Sarah Schmidt and Darcy, Peckman Kruger, who just led the district, so we appreciate the support. It's a really unique opportunity to have an authorizer who is a school district, that is something that is unique, there used to be a lot more districts and universities who did that, currently there are two left, Shasago Lake Schools in Northfield, I believe, are the two that are left, one of them was authorizing until about a year and a half ago, but they no longer are, so, we believe it's a very beneficial agreement to be an authorizer, which really says that they're oversight and helps us as a small public school. We do have, currently have a service agreement with Shasago Lakes for business services, tech services, and some other services that are completely separate from authorizing, and had nothing to do with authorizing, so if there were questions about that, we can talk about that at another time, but, but those are separate entities that, that come up through a request for proposal process that will be going on again this spring. So when I come, I just talk about the general health of the school, what's happening at Wolf Creek, we are an online learning hybrid, so we have a campus on Tuesdays and Thursdays, we serve students in grades nine through twelve, and I did send some graphs that we look at at the end of term one of each year, and Eric can just pull those up, but overall, we have a lot of applications and a lot of students right now, we run at about two-hundred-and-thirty students, we're at capacity right now, so we're not a school that wants to have a thousand students or two thousand students, we're a small school entity, we are based on a model, learning manager advisor model, and that's our philosophy, that we would remain small, so in general, the enrollment has been fairly steady, you know, oddly enough, at the very beginning of COVID, we dipped down a little bit, because I think there were a lot of online opportunities in Minnesota, and then this fall, through the Department of Education and some online collaboratives, we know that another hundred and ten online programs opened, but our enrollment went up a little bit, which our board wasn't, you know, anticipating, they weren't sure what that would do, so I think our twenty years of experience is showing with other programs that are starting and just starting to have that process. So enrollment has been steady, we can just kind of keep going. In general, we can go down to the next one here, we do tend to serve students in grades twelve and twelve plus. We do tend to serve students in grades twelve and twelve plus who come to us when they're maybe looking for a different, a different option or a different opportunity. So that's something that we usually show. You know, this is fall twenty twenty-two, and then there's a fall twenty twenty-one graph below. Again, our ninth grade is very small, tends to be very small, and that twelve and twelve plus tends to be a little bit larger, and that story continues. We do serve a fairly amorous in terms of Minnesota statute population as we look at that population. And a lot of our students come to us behind any credits or academic skills and serve those students from a variety of communities. And then the other graphs are just where is the resident district at the end of term one, where are students coming from? And the board will sometimes ask for that. So the largest piece of the pie, the blue, is other, which is we can take students from anywhere in the state of Minnesota, so from a variety of places. But because we have the lab, because we have students coming to lab, taking students from North Branch, Forest Lake, and Shasago Lakes, again, is something that happens usually for students who are displaced and not feeling that they're doing well in other, in other enrolling districts because they may be behind on credits or needing more time. And then the final testing graphs are things that we do for MAPS, which just that our graduation rate does get better as we move into the five, six, and seven year cohorts because students come to us a year, two years, unfortunately, with COVID, three years behind in school, so it takes a little bit longer to graduate. And then the final slide is just the goals that we have with Shasago Lake Schools, which our students on track at the beginning of the year with nineteen credits will graduate at ninety-one percent and students on track and enrolling. And those are pieces that we work with through the department of that. So those are the graphs that I usually bring. We're looking for something different or want to do something different in the future or have questions, just let me know.
How many teachers do you have?
Oh, gosh, I count in my head. One, two, three, four, eleven, eleven teachers. We, our special education population has really risen last year and this year. So we're looking at adding a third special education teacher. Right now, we have two language arts, two special ed, health and PE, a music, two math, two science, two social studies. So, yeah. And then we have a very part-time American Sign Language person, a very part-time art person.
What's the farthest distance any one of your on-campus people traveled? Where do they come from? I see, I mean, I can see the chart, but...
Our students.
How far away do they come from?
Well, I mean, we've had students who come to us on graduation day, and they live three or four hours away because they choose to come to this campus. This campus is optional. So they'll come on graduation day and say, like, you're my advisor. I've only seen you on, like, Zoom. This is really cool. This is really fun. So, yeah, get three, four hours away, definitely. Anywhere in the state of Minnesota, we can take students. And we say that all the interventions that we offer on campus are also offered virtually.
One thing I never realized before, and I should have just paid more attention, sixty-one of two hundred and thirty-one are Shasago Lakes. And I always thought it was just the majority of the kids there, so I was, that was a helpful chart, I think, to see where everybody comes from.
Right, because students come from all over, and then, yeah, we collaborate together. And obviously, completely separate, you know, through the service agreement that does not have anything to do with being an authorizer, we pay a per pupil fee to Shasago Lakes for every student, no matter what, you know, what resident they are, resident district that they are. So and there's, you know, there are other ways we can collaborate through transportation aid and other pieces that benefit both part, you know, both parties.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I was Mr. McGonigal, who was here from Community Education to talk about our proposed rate increase.
I'm chair, do we need a...
I don't know. Oh, for Triobo? Oh, information. Quite worthwhile. It was just for information.
I don't know if we have to accept the report.
You know what, just to be safe, let's just make a motion in a second. It's okay.
Josh, you want to make it?
I'm there. Am I being told to make a motion?
I thought I heard you saying that.
We have a motion. We need a second.
I will second.
All in favor, say aye. Again, same sign. Motion passes. Now, we have Mr. McGonigal to talk about the proposed rate increase for the preschool.
Madam Chair, board members, thank you for taking your time to hear our proposed rate increase for our upcoming twenty-three and twenty-four school year. So the, so for the why, really, the bulk of this request is based on the two eighty-four wage increases. And some of that numbers that we did, the two point five increase was done prior to two eighty-four settling. But now that we know that that's part of, you know, now that that has been settled, you know, we still feel comfortable with that two point five increase. So, you know, we kind of looked at it and did a review as to where we hoped we would end up. So you can see the comparison on the next slide. Couple down. We, let's see here, sorry. So for the five half-days, we would be going to two seventy-four a month per families. For three half-days, we'd be going to one sixty-four, and for two half-days, we'd be going to one ten. So the two point five is reflected in those numbers. The next slide for Little Wildcat, that comparison, do I go back here? So the two seventy-four ends up being thirteen seventy a day. And if you run that across there, this was, this was a slide that was kind of hard to compare because it's not necessarily apple to apple, but like in Forest Lake, at one site, they're twenty-four dollars per day, and at another site, they're twenty-one fifty per day. At Stillwater, it's three sixty-five a month, but that's for four half-days. So I think in my initial proposal, I didn't even want to wade into that confusion, which created a little more confusion, I think, the fact that I didn't present that data. But, you know, you just kind of go across there, and we're still well within, well under what the going rate around us is for this service. And then you can see, obviously, the three half-days and the two half-days, that comparison wasn't even apple to apple. You know, our non-school day activity costs continue to increase as well, which is another additional reason for the request. And then we're also looking at an increase for our kids club rate, which before school is eight dollars a day, and we're proposing that to go up to twelve dollars a day. And then you kind of can see there, after school, eight dollars a day to twelve dollars a day. Before preschool, so for our preschool students, setting twelve dollars a day to sixteen, and again, after is twelve, sixteen as well. And then to compare that to area districts, you see that, that our twelve dollars, a couple of them, they're also looking at rate increases. So North Branch and Forest Lake didn't have the data for next year. But you see that they're going to go up, obviously, from the fourteen fifty and thirteen fifty that they are in Stillwater and from the eleven and thirteen. So we expect that we will be, again, right in the ballpark of what our neighbors are charging for these services and what their families are paying. Stillwater, fourteen dollars, fourteen fifty, sixteen forty-five. So you can kind of see, but, you know, I certainly, this was given a lot of thought within our office, within our staff. We didn't come to this decision lightly, but it's been multiple years, especially for kids club. So we just felt like keeping in line with the trends in businesses and in business that we're seeing and the costs that we're having to bear within the program that this proposal made sense. So we, but we did thank you for your time and consideration. And I have several of you reach out with thoughtful questions and wanting more data and more information. And Dean and I and Michelle Plice, then, you know, all contributed to a little bit of this data as well in terms of just helping formulate it in the right way. Thank you for that as well.
Are there any board members who have questions for Dan?
Well, in comparison, it does appear we're considerably lower. And I'm sure you did your numbers and everything, but I do think you probably, this may be a yearly thing, perhaps, or is competitive. And I know we have a waiting list a lot of the times, but I know where your budget is and some things like that, which is a very positive thing. But we are considerably less than everybody else around us. And I know sometimes it's hard to compare to Stillwater, but certainly Forest Lake and North Branch are within places that people may serve. They may serve our kids too, so it's kind of great that you can keep those numbers low.
Yeah, and to your point, Jeff.
Pretty remarkable, sorry.
To your point, Jeff, I mean, you look at that kids club number is the most jarring one, right? To go from eight dollars to twelve dollars, fifty percent increase. I agree with you, going up fifty cents a year requisite to having to jump it all the way up four dollars at one point is probably more valid, or twenty-five cents. I don't mean to suggest the number out loud, but that, to me, seems more, a more palatable approach for families versus what we kind of had to do reactionary-wise because it hadn't been done for a while.
Any other questions?
I guess a question for, not necessarily for Dan, but whoever can answer it. The staff that work for Community Education, are they also under the GME four?
Yeah, our parists, all of our parist staff in both of those locations, kids club and Little Wildcat preschool would be all part of that. Yeah, yeah. And even some other support staff as well. Certainly, the biggest bulk of our staff would be within that parist support group.
And so like, just to follow up for the HR side, is there a separate job, a classification, or is it kind of a, I suppose they would be on a letter? Three classifications. I mean, they're typically either on the E schedule or B, right, the E schedule.
A schedule.
Okay, hearing one more question. We'll need a motion in a second to approve the increases that Dan presented to me. I'll make a motion to accept the lowest grades for next year.
I'll second it.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Again, same sign. Motion passes. Thanks, Dan.
Thank you.
All right. Next, we're going to talk about the alternative learning plan for the primary school due to some unusual circumstances where our first graders are short of the date. And we have Principal Amy Bryce here to talk to us tonight.
So we did link into the background, obviously, the information on this, and we've been communicating about that over the last month in my weekly updates. I think we're going to have a plan, we need to do something. And so you have all the background. I wasn't necessarily expecting Amy necessarily to present at all, but we wanted to have principals available to talk about some of the things we're proposing here tonight. But I think we all understand the situation, and Amy put the summary together very well. We have our proposal and kind of the details for families on what happened. But if you want to comment on it, you have collaboration in your building, and you've come up with a great plan. So if there's anything you want to highlight in that, and then board members, if you have questions for Amy, she certainly can help you with that.
Yeah, it was a unique situation, so it was just the primary that was out of power that day and just left. But the snow day is primary first grade students a day behind in terms of instructional hours. And so this was a collaborative plan, really brought it to the first grade team first, said, hey, what do you think? What are some things that we can do to help our students learning and provide them support? You know, while still maintaining their professional development and all those sorts of things. So this plan that was here was created by that team and then brought forth to MDE and all sorts of people to put all the pieces together and make sure that the details work. But basically, the students will be given a choice board of different activities that will be put together by staff member who's already volunteered and said, I'll put it together, and will get paid with staff development funds. Students will work on that in the morning, and then teachers will be available all afternoon for support. They can call, they can email, all those sorts of things. They'll have teachers available and student activities as well, and approved by MDE to make up those instructional hours.
I just have to comment that when I read the report and I looked at the topics, I was actually intrigued by doing some of the activities on there, so.
We're going to have yours graded.
And then you bring in front of the first grade team, you're like, and then we can, and then we can.
You know, it's a unique circumstance too, because March thirty-first is a staff dollar day for our district, and so that's a day that we wouldn't normally have had students. And so these students will be in session at home, but our teachers will still be here in the morning doing professional development. They have planned teacher work time in the afternoon, so if a student does have a question, they can work with them in the afternoon. So it's unique in that way. I mean, for a parent, I mean, they're going to receive this information to have their children work on at home, so they're being put in that kind of teacher or monitor role. But these are, these are an approved way that we can make up those instructional hours without having to bring back just first grade at primary school on another day in the summer, right? I mean, we would end the school year, we would have to have brought these one grade level students in one building back for an additional day of school. So you're talking bus service, food service, you know, everything that goes with it. And this was a way that we could solve that by providing curriculum and academic, you know, opportunities for children without, you know, doing, doing that alternative, which is problematic when you have to work through that. But it was unique, and we are required by state statute to have a certain amount of instructional hours per grade level throughout the system. And this was our, this was our solution to that.
I wanted to be very cognizant too that the age of first grade learners, you know, sometimes they're with grandparents or neighbors or, you know, wherever they may be for that day, that wherever they are, they can take this and do these activities, and that's easily supported.
I do have a question, Amy. Yes, will you be breaking the news to the first graders? Because I have a first grade family member, and I'm still on her list for adding that extra school day in January. She called me the next morning after the January board meetings, told me that she was very upset with me. And I said, we agree, we had a choice. You go to school one extra day in the winter or one in the summer? Okay. So I can't imagine how fragile it needs to tell her that she has to go another day or participate in school another day.
Yeah, yeah, and we love kids to love to come to school, but yep, they'll get all that information we thought for stuff to come here, but yep, they'll all get the news.
And just to clarify for maybe someone who's listening that, because in kindergarten doesn't have to come, is because there's a different amount of hours required of a kindergarten student than a first grade student. So our kindergartners are fine, even though that day they have the power outage too. It's just the first graders where they be under the required hours.
Exactly, and there's already been talk within the building on, you know, how do you have it for first grade and not for kindergarten? Because our kindergarten learners are, they want to learn, like, they want to do some of these things. They, it's fun, that sort of thing, but again, they're not required. Teachers, they're not there for support, so there's talk on how you do it for some of the building and not all the building, and that's the stuff we're still working with.
Now, Ms. Graves, with this pending approval from the board to accept this plan for that one day at primary school, you would have communicated with your family and staff to say that this has been approved, and this is what's going to happen, when it's going to happen, how far out in advance you would let people know that this is what we're doing?
So we'll let them know yet in February what the plan is going forward so that they can plan. And then usually, for communication, it's in the Friday office notes that I send out within the narrative, and it's normal for me to repeat them. So it's like a quick summary, here's what's coming next. And as we get closer, it gets more detailed information.
Well, I just would like to compliment you on your collaborative approach and your creativity. This was really a unique situation. I was able to preserve the teacher staff development and also preserve the student day and give people some options, so thank you.
Absolutely, they're a great team to work with, so happy to do so.
Okay, so we'll need a motion in a second to approve the alternative instruction plan at the primary school.
Madam Chair, I make a motion to accept the alternative instruction plan for primary school in three three.
I'll second.
Motion in a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Again, same sign. Motion passes. Okay, so we'll move right from alternative learning to the e-learning plan.
We do have three principals here present. I'm going to ask you guys just to step up in case there are some questions. Do you want to come through to that? in case there are some questions. Do you want to come through to that piece? But so, you know, I guess similar but different. And we've provided background for you as board members, but for those who are listening as well. I kind of, I guess phrase it this way, when there has been snow, our cancellations across the state of Minnesota, you see the scrolling thing at the bottom of KAR 11 News, and it says, this district is closed today, this district is e-learning, that type of thing. We haven't had e-learning here at Shisaka Lakes. And so with the kind of wild December that we had and early part of January, we certainly have used up all three of our scheduled snow days, basically. And so here it is, we're still in February 9th, and we got a lot of winter to navigate yet. So one of the things we've talked about and put a proposal out there to create e-learning here in Shisaka Lakes, which under state statute is a allowable opportunity through MBE guidelines, but also requires collaboration between ourselves and the teachers, which we have done, yeah, to develop this plan. So you've seen the summary now for about a week, and this is kind of a summary of everything. Obviously, it's not the great detail that we would go into at each building level in terms of communicating with staff and students and parents about this is what's actually going to happen on that day. So it wasn't our intention to drill down to the nitty-gritty here with the summary sheet for all of you. And the summary sheet will also go out to our parents and families tomorrow. But it will, at each building level, each principal will send out a more specific, here's what the, what the schedule will look like on that day. Also, with that schedule for the individual day, there'll be, there'll be information on how you actually do all these things that are on here for the students to engage in learning that day. So you can see it outlined in that way. One of the things that's not outlined on there is what would, what would support staff be doing? Because obviously, we're not providing food service that day. If we have an e-learning day, they're doing their learning at home. We would not have a lot of the small group work and things that we do as well. And so that's a piece to this, that in our communication tomorrow, we obviously, to families and parents, we're not really spelling out what all staff are doing. But when it comes to the staff side of this, obviously, teachers and certified staff have things to do. But as far as our support staff goes, they will not have assignments on that day because there's not really things we can have them do. And so that's one of the things that the principals will communicate out tomorrow as well, or in the next couple of days to their support staff, that what their opportunities would be. I asked Mr. Reeve before the meeting started, just, we think about how that's communicated to our support staff, and I know you put together a little bit of communication, would you mind just commenting on what support staff will be doing? Because that's not a part of, it wasn't our intent to put this in this document, but we wanted you to know that, obviously, we recognize the hard work of our support staff. But when we're, when we're doing e-learning, our learning at home, there's not that opportunity to do the small group that support staff will normally work with. So if you want to make a comment on that.
Sure, yeah. The challenge with, with an e-learning day, just like a snow day, is that just a really short notice when those decisions are made. And so that's why we've adopted kind of a choice board, a lot like what you saw at that elementary level, for e-learning days, and therefore, what the support staff are able to really support is the students with realistically. Based on a choice board like that, it doesn't really fit. But we decided that we still wanted people to have an opportunity, if they wanted to make up those hours from a financial perspective, that they could contact their building administrator, and they'd be given an opportunity to do that in the future. Kind of depending when the snow day would fall, we can look at the end of the school year. We always have things to wrap up at the end of the year, to button up before summer, or things to prepare for the following school year, like, most of us start working on that as kids are doing field trips and they're away, our support staff stay busy if they aren't otherwise assigned to work with kids. And so it's just, we're kind of leaving it up to the support staff. If they'd like, that compensation will be given, that opportunity to make it up at the end of the year, potentially a staff development day when they would not have it worth it, be working.
Just one question on that, is that, would that be, and that might be getting too fine a detail, but would that be then like a compensatory, they will have been considered to have worked? Or do they kind of, I guess, financially, if they're, they get the day of pay when this happens, there's an e-learning day, and then they just have to make up the time later, or is? Maybe, like I said, maybe get it to.
No, they actually have to actually do the work.
Okay.
When they, when they do the work, then they'll pay.
Okay, right. But if they're just given an opportunity that they would not have had?
Correct.
Okay, yeah.
They each get paid at their daily rate of pay.
Right, when they do the work.
Sure. And currently, contractually, many have the opportunity to use, use a sick day when there's been a cancellation.
But they can choose a personal day or a sick day, it's up to them.
Sure, sure, okay. But, but this plan would offer them a day of work later that they wouldn't have previously had.
Correct.
I see in the MOA that there's a five-day cap, is that, so did you guys install like the Farmer's Almanac? We're here telling us what it implies, knowing that.
Well, we get three to start with before we go to e-learning. So get a total.
And it's actually Minnesota statute that you know, apply.
Oh, sure.
But the almanac would have been another option.
I have become pretty good at all, all things weather, but I'm not that good. But one, one thing too, and Todd's here maybe more from the secondary level. So you, you saw what, what Amy's students will do with a choice board. That's a similar concept, it takes a reference to what would happen at the elementary level. We do not have a Chromebook for every student, we don't have that, that type of apparatus to do. So they're going to have basically that work to do, choice board type thing. So pencil-to-paper activity type of activity. Todd would represent from the secondary level, so grade six through 12, what would be going on there. And that's outlined in here, and we basically have two apparatuses that we work with. At the middle school level, we work with Google Classroom, which is a way that we can organize all their assignments and information. At the high school, we use Schooling, which is an online apparatus for students to access all of their learning, basically. And so at those levels, that's how the students would really engage with the learning. And Todd can probably give you a little more detail than that, not necessarily drilling it down to the finance details, but that's the concept.
Right, so just using those platforms. So at the middle school, we'll have Google Classroom, and everything will be posted by nine o'clock. Teachers are going to be available all day long for students to reach out via email. For if they need some one-on-one help, let's say it's math or it's English, they don't understand the assignment, they are going to be available and can set up that individualized help during that time. So I feel like we're in a different spot than our elementary parts of the district, but I feel like we're in a good spot to support our, our students and support learning on that day, if that day comes.
And as you can see from the MOA, and that piece ties in with this, but the, the teacher work day would start at 7:15 a.m. And we would be expecting to have work for the students by 9:00 a.m. So from 7:15 to 9:00, teachers have an opportunity to put things together. So if you kind of recall what happens on a cancellation day like that, I'm going to be all driving around at 4:00 a.m. with the bus garage and with Robin, we get up early, and we make that call, we make that call at 5:00 a.m. And that all has to happen, we have to make a call by, you know, two hours in front of when we expect students to be able to, to get online and do things. And so we're going to make a decision by 5:00 a.m., we're going to have that decision out to all of our staff, students, families, they're all going to know. And then teachers would have the option of reporting here at school, and, or they could work from a remote location, but they need to use that 7:15 time until 9:00 a.m. to be ready for their students. And then at 9:00 a.m., 9 to 3, we're on, kind of to be available and be able to help students. And then there's a little bit of time at the end of the day, 3 to 3:15, where the staff will be wrapping up as well. So that's all, kind of works in concert, the MOA along with this plan, to make this all come together. But the first step is, we do want, you know, we are seeking approval of the plan, the summary document that you have in front of you, and then we'll go into talking about the MOA. If you have any questions about that, because those are the two things we're looking for. Again, we have principals who have any other individual questions about that, but otherwise, that's the summary. The plan is to send out communication tomorrow, and I'll, so Michelle Kleist will get out communication to all our families. I'll send out an email to our staff, and I may answer that, to let them know, here's what's going on to families. So you'll, you'll be able to see that. But it's basically just, it is this summary document, it's basically what families are going to receive. We'll also have this posted on our website too, so it's kind of a button they can push and say, okay. Because if we don't have an e-learning day, you know, for a long time, or maybe we never have it, it's like, oh, where's that information again? And we would make it accessible by on the website, but also pushing it out from our buildings.
Well, I would commend all of you that worked on this, including the staff, because I didn't think it could come together this quickly. And I don't know where everybody else was, but I just know how much it takes a little bit to do some of that. Commend all of you, and I, I didn't hear Pete about anybody, how it wasn't going okay. So I think that's really a good thing for all of you too, that you really collaborated. I mean, I think that's really a critical thing, that it kind of went without a hitch and went very quickly, so thank you.
And just, I think I would reiterate for parents that are listening, because I've read a lot in the newspapers about districts that are adding this, and parents were like, what? No snow days? Those were some of my favorite memories and whatever. But just remember, contractually, we have three snow days, so we have those first. E-learning wouldn't kick in until we get to day four. And, and again, it saves kids from having to come back in the summer to make up days. And again, particularly our seniors become affected by how many hours they're in school. And if they're short, it's a real bummer, because then they have to stay longer than what they anticipated. So it's a good plan, I think, to have in place, but again, it's, it's day four of a snow day, so there's many years we probably won't ever hit e-learning. Just wanted to remind people about that.
One question. I think it mentioned it either in the MOA or maybe your background on it. It's not necessarily just a snow day, right, it's that emergency closure.
We have a, we have a, we could go at an individual site, I suppose, like that, we have, you know, that, that could be done.
I'm just talking about statutorily, like, we don't have to have, like, if we have a situation at the primary school, it doesn't have to be, oh, there's, it's not a snow event, it's, oh, the water pipe burst, then we can't have school.
Currently, the e-learning day legislation is just for inclement weather. There's been proposals every year since the past, and I was just rereading all of that right now, to up that from five days to 10 days, and then to give some more freedom for events.
Okay, so we have three emergency days, but this e-learning plan doesn't necessarily cover this for emergency.
That's the department event clears it like they did with our.
Inaction. Well, that's called an alternative learning plan.
As an e-learning experiment.
That's, that's alternative.
Just change the name.
I mean, I, I'll look for, I guess, your direction on that. Do we consider, instead of saying that we have to burn up the three closure days? Because once you're burned with those and we have to use an e-learning day, if we have a pipe burst, or?
We could look though then for an alternative learning.
Okay, that's, okay, that's.
Another avenue we could pursue.
Okay.
And that, and that would be dependent upon if those students see it, those hours too. That would be the other piece. If it was a grade level where they were short hours, we'd have to think about that. There's some tools available to do that.
Okay.
Yeah. And then the last thing, I guess I would say, with this, and this will go out in our communication tomorrow, just with the, with the February 20th changing of the calendar, we're basically put back in our third snow day. So if we, we're going to go to school on February 20th now, that actually gives us another snow day, basically. So our first e-learning day would actually be our fifth day, if that were to come in the past. Now, if we go to school on February 20th, which we're planning on doing, and we don't do any other, other inclement weather days for the rest of the year, we'd be having students done with school one day earlier than they anticipated. And then that would push the staff, last staff day up one day earlier as well. So that's, that's all what you approved when you approved that calendar alteration last month. And so, yeah, it sounds super confusing, we'll, in most ways, but we'll sort it out and communicate just what happens. But again, we have no idea how to predict where the weather's going to be coming up here, but we've got quite a bit of winter left to navigate. So we've got some tools in our, in our arsenal here to try to help avoid going into later into doing with education, which is problematic.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, we'll need a motion in a second to approve the e-learning plan, and then we'll move on to the MOA next.
I'll say it.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against, same sign. Motion passes. Thank you, everybody. Now we'll move on to the memorandum of agreement, which is for the subject plan.
Yeah, and again, in the background, I provided there that we work and collaborate with our climbing leadership with Cheryl and Sheila, and worked through just the particulars to this. And we bring it before you, as written, with approval from them as well. So it's, again, I don't know that I want to need to necessarily point out one thing in particular. There's the, the piece is that's be to the hours that people are working, part-time, we have part-time staff. And I think one thing that is kind of unique is we have to make, we have to make some, I guess, accommodations for those that aren't actually working directly with students as a classroom teacher. So you can see under summary of work, we're trying to address if you're a certified staff member who does something else other than as a classroom teacher, what would you then do that day to demonstrate that you provided value to the student experience or to the school district? And so there's an opportunity there for those staff to, to recognize what they accomplished during that day or that time. So, yeah, I guess I don't have anything else to point out, unless you have a specific question.
I have a question, but I'll echo Lori's praise and Jeff's praise to admin and staff for being able to collaborate on it. I think that's tremendous that the staff has that flexibility to be able to turn things on a dime and have some preparation to provide an educational experience for the kids. So I think that's exceptional, that they're, they're able to do it, and that admin can work with them to make it happen, so.
Adam, chair, I make a motion to accept the climbing e-learning.
I'll say it. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against, same sign. Motion passes. You guys are getting faster than options. Okay, we're going to move on to the consideration for an early retirement incentive that was brought forward by teachers union club.
I provided some background on that. I think, you know, the main thing is, is as a board, this is covered by statute, there is an opportunity to have teachers individually or as a group can request an opportunity for early retirement incentive. Again, it's something where you as a board can look at that situation on an annual basis and make a decision on an annual basis. Past year, we did not offer one. In previous years, we did some pretty substantial budget reductions, and we did offer early retirement incentives during those years. It's something where I guess as a board, you consider all the resources that you allocate on an annual basis. This is another example of you're allocating resources towards everything that happens here in the district. If you choose as a board to allocate resources towards an early retirement incentive, you know, that's a choice that you can make. It's one where, why do, you know, why, when would districts consider this? Well, we had some pretty substantial budget reductions in the past, that's something we've done. It can provide savings for districts initially, and it certainly has for us in the past. In the past couple of years in particular, as we've struggled with staffing and finding e-staff for certain positions, certainly the rate of, I guess, what we're, what we've received in the return in, in the past has diminished to some degree. And so, you know, there's that piece. And again, from a staffing standpoint, across the state, we're struggling with staffing. It's not just unique to Shisaka Lakes or anywhere else. It's one where if you incentivize a person to, to retire, certainly you're still going to have to fill that position. And again, for a person who would like to retire and possibly receive the incentive to do so, it's certainly not their problem that there's a staffing shortage across the state. But it is one that the board would have to, you know, wrestle with, you know, when a position is vacant. And so, again, allocating resources toward it certainly is possible, it's just a matter of, you know, when you do that, you still have a position then that's potentially vacant. And as we're finding over the last couple of years in particular, we're allocating more resources to the rehires than we possibly have in the past when there was more people available. So again, you know, from our standpoint, we just want to give you the information. Again, it's something that the board each year, should they be requested, you would have to consider, would you do it? And so possibly, you'd have what rate you would pay for that.
So just for a little more background, so sometimes in the past, for example, we were cutting a lot. The argument is, if there's a teacher that's on the bubble to retire, so a higher-paid, more experienced teacher that they're thinking about retiring, if you offer some sort of financial incentive, they leave, and then you can hire a brand-new teacher or, you know, a less expensive teacher, quite honestly, for that position, and save the money, the difference between salaries. Even though you're offering retirement incentive, there's still some savings because the person you brought in is a lot more expensive than the person exiting. Again, we all know that the staffing situation has changed in the state. And so particularly in areas like special education and industrial tech, some positions are very, very difficult to fill. And in a lot of cases, we. some positions are very, very difficult to fill. And in a lot of cases, we've ended up in the last year or two, paying more to bring people in than we ever have in the past, because we have to fill the spots. And so, as Dean explained, there's sort of a diminishing return on it, because depending on the position, and I know it varies by position, you may or may not be able to get a cheaper teacher in that position. So, you may be paying the incentive, and then you're also still paying the same amount of salary. So, it really hasn't financially anyone, anyone saved. Now, I'm not saying I know that in every case. It's sort of, um, it's an unknown, who we're going to get, how many candidates, how much we're going to have to pay them. But that's just some history about it. Why we, why we have used it in the past versus why maybe we would. So, I don't know if anyone else wants to offer any thoughts or questions or any history about it.
It seems kind of dangerous to put it out there if we had an unknown of what we would have. I'm, I'm assuming that if we say a green light, we're going to do this, that that would be open, that any, anybody that wants to retire would take advantage of that? Or is it based on each approval?
There's a criteria. There's criteria you have to meet. So, for example, you have to have been in the school, I don't know if I have this all memorized, so fill me in if I'm missing something, but in the district 15 years and over the age of 50, I believe. Or if you've been in the district 55. That's what it was last time. Okay. Or if you've been in the district 30 years, then there's no age requirement. So, you have to meet the requirements. But we, we can change that. That's just the last one. But anyone who retires that meets those criteria would be entitled to the incentive if we put it in place.
I think it's a little more scary now than it used to be, just because of the shortages and the wages have went so high, that, yeah, it's, it's a little under the, to remember that.
Any other questions or as you're processing this?
I'm not sure if the discussion's going to come after the motion and the second, or if the discussion's going to occur now. So, that's what I was kind of wondering.
Well, I just found out in officer training, it is okay to have some pre-discussions. But if you prefer to get a motion on the table, we can do that as well. But it's okay to have some pre-discussions, but when we get to the motion, we feel informed.
Well, this motion could be an affirmative or the negative, I guess, depending on how you do it. And I was a recipient of the retirement incentive in 2020. I think you did it 2021. I don't know if we did or not.
We did. We had a January 2021, we had a, uh, $10,000 early retirement incentive.
And in 2020, it was $14,000, if I remember.
Yeah.
Didn't we have six or seven? I'm trying to remember the number. And do you know what the number was in 2021? I don't, I just don't.
The number of people who.
Yeah, that was seven in 2020. And that's, that's a tough one to, you know, come up with. That's like a long time ago. And then last year, we did not. And so, this year we are, no question. And so, I always look at it like, I look at it as kind of like a win-win. But, you know, certainly for the district's benefit, you don't want to be paying somebody $14,000 or $10,000 or whatever amount that you would decide if, if you don't, if they're going to go out anyway, right? So, there's a gamble. We already know one person, considering you have a permanent resignation, which fairly certain that person's going to go. We have proved it. There is a financial, certainly, thing to consider. There's a financial thing to consider on the other side of that, too. The money that is, if you decide to put it out there, goes into an MSRS, which all the severance is going to an MSRS, which can be used for bridging, most of the time it's used to bridge health insurance. And health insurance right now is about $800 a month for single and with health and dental, and probably closer to $1,700. I would have to look at that, family-wise. So, that money, so what it does for a single gives them, if you get 14, I'm just saying, for example, for me, I had this used money. It gives you an opportunity to bridge retiring at 60 or 62, whenever you do get to 65, when it branch to about two-thirds of what the total cost is. All of our severance is typically going to MSRS. And, uh, so there's a financial thing both ways. I, if I get the money, I can use it to bridge, and then I can depart by a position that you had to be here at least 30 years or 55 years old, or, um, on a 15-year deal. The second thing is a personal one. You know, as a teacher, you kind of feel like you're ready to go, but financially, you're maybe unable to go. So, what it does is allows you to go a little earlier, which maybe you get a win-win for the district and for the teacher. Sometimes there's, you know, I've helped a lot of dozen teachers make that decision over the years, take them down to TRA, kind of look at things. And so, there's that advantage of that you have somebody going when they all really want to be here. And that money helps them bridge that, that gap. And the district really wants to have people that want to be here and feel like they're contributing at a high level too. So, sometimes that can be an issue both ways. You know, the way that we've been with COVID and with our, with, uh, the last two or three years, it's been very difficult. You talk to any of our teachers in our three principals here, it's been a difficult time. We've lost, uh, you know, kind of across the state, a lot of teachers have gone, and a lot of admin have left. If there was an admin that could go there, then I mean, I think that's kind of what you're seeing administratively, because it's just been such a really difficult time to be in education. And then there's such things as grandkids, you know, it's 30 to 40 years of teaching, and then your health, you know, those kinds of things. As you get older, you kind of contemplate those things, and it's just better to move on to that next phase of retirement. Um, so I'm talking a lot here. I realize that, but it's a pretty important decision that we have to make. Um, I had a couple of other things here. So, to me, it's just the big thing. It's, it's a bridge. It really does help both parties, I think. But you do have to kind of consider, and it's, it's the pool of the people that you think might take it. And, uh, I think there is maybe quite a few that would qualify. We're not really sure how many that is, but it's more, maybe it's, it's more than three. You know, it could be quite a few people. And, you know, I hear whisperings only because I, you know, when you're an old teacher, you meet a teacher that's old, still in the business, you say, "So, what are you thinking?" You know? And then everybody is at that position, and after going through these last few years, is contemplating that. They're just doing it. So, I always look at it, well, how can we have you move on? My position, I look at, I think you can choose some of them, and you go, "Well, it's really hard, because we got to hire somebody at a high level in order to replace them. And that's a lot of money." And I'm not sure if we come out on that person. We might lose on that person anyways. But we do help them move on. We do help, you know, transfer that person to do a place. But in my cases, they're on the third person since I retired. And two of them were beginning teachers, and one was, the first teacher they had was a teacher with experience. And the first two didn't last long. And I know there was quite a savings, because when you look at, if you look at the salary schedule, you remember all the certified people that motioned at the high end of the salary schedule. A lot of people are in that 80, 85 range. And our schedule is about 40 and 45. So, you kind of got to look at, if six go, what is the cumulative, you know, financial effect of that? And then what's the personal effect of all those things? And that's really a hard one, because I think Lori said, yes, it's a gamble. So.
So, I think I would just respond to Sam. I understand in your previous role, when you're thinking about how can you help the person, but I think our job and our role is to think about what is going to be best to benefit the school district. Uh, in terms of like, I think we need to ask ourselves the question, what would be the financial incentive for the district to offer this this year? What would be our financial incentive to do this this year?
And I would say, there's a little more to the financial. And I don't want to have this kind of.
No, I'm not saying that's the sole thing. But I do think we, as a board, have to consider that, particularly since we're heading into, within the next couple of weeks, budget reductions. This will just add to the budget reductions. I mean, initially, anyway. Because it is a gamble, we don't know how much. We don't, we don't know that. We never do. But, um, and then I, I'd also argue that when we've done this in the past, it's always been a one-year MOA, not meant to be an expectation that every year we're going to offer a retirement incentive. It's just when it serves the district financially, and it's, it was never meant to like supplant or be a severance. It's really something totally separate in my mind. Um, so, and I don't necessarily know if it's the role of the school board to decide when to help teachers move on. I think that's a personal decision. I think each employee needs to decide when they're ready to retire and for what reasons. And I don't really think that's our job to influence that. So.
And I am, I'm going to speak on that too, because I think it's really hard. I mean, you've heard two from two different views. Um, and as an ex-professor, I, I dealt with that at the college level too. Uh, but it's not our role. It's really hard to separate sometimes. And, and our role is financial at this point. Yes, you care about, we all care about the teachers, we want to do what's best. But we also have to look at the financial, what's, is it a win-win? Because the last time when Southern went, when Jeff was, it was really, it was really close to not being a win-win. Okay? And I know, and, and I think it's perceived that it's always a win-win, but it's, it's not. If you can break even, you're happy. And I think maybe even the last time we didn't. And the time when he went, we barely did. So, that's why I'm reluctant about it, because especially with the financial picture we have right now, that unknown is scary. Um, and I, I get we want to do what's best, the personal thing, but, but we also have to look at what our role is as a board and what we're here to do.
And I don't know if I've ever worked with a business director that whenever this comes up, has ever said, "Yeah, this is definitely what you should do. It's going to benefit you," because it's just more gray than that. So, it's not a, it's not a clear financial win. And I'd say even the example we had in the consent agenda, where it's like a foreign language teacher. There were a couple of years where we wanted to add a Spanish teacher to the middle school. We're like, "This is really going to benefit our system. We want Spanish to start earlier." We could not find and hire a Spanish teacher. We looked for two years, and finally we just, so, just so happens, we're going to need to fill a Spanish teacher position coming up. And I don't think we're going to save a lot of money on that position. That's my personal guess on that, just because we couldn't even find one before. Um, and, uh, so we just don't know what we're going to have to face on.
That one's kind of bottom hopper anyway.
Well, she's, she's already, but we're going to have to fill that position. So, anyway, any other opinions? Jeff and I have talked a lot. Brenda got to share. Any other thoughts, questions?
I guess, uh, you want to go first? I'll go. Uh, my experience, I guess, with this is it seems to be more something that could be put into the labor contract, uh, you know, as, uh, we're going to take care of our people that have been, you know, longevity. And what you've said, Lori, it kind of resonates that if we offer this incentive, that's exactly what it's an incentive for somebody to move on, so that the district can kind of save some money. I totally agree that, you know, when we do a labor contract, that adding it in there, because then it can be calculated as far of, this is what it costs ahead of time, and they kind of eat into a plan or something like that. But I guess, not, you know, I, the law enforcement side of me, that we would have it, you know, that's set here in our contract. And, boy, if they, if, if the police commission said, "We're going to give you $20,000 to retire," you know, I think you'd see a mess.
Well, state troopers do have some.
Uh, yeah, state, yeah.
Have some pretty good early retirement incentives. But Corey, you know, not, you know, certified, there is a severance for teachers, and they get paid. And that was a crossover year about 20 years, uh, 20 years ago. And then what it, what it is, is it used to be 100 days at your daily rate of pay. Okay. That was your severance, and then they switched over through negotiations. It was a 403B match. And then, so what you did is you took 100 days of pay, 100 days at your daily rate of pay, minus what the district put into your 403B match. So, that was, yeah, so my severance was about $8,000, and then I got about $14,000 for early retirement incentive that went into MSRS to help you bridge that. But the problem was there was a transition there where people kind of got shorted, because they were only here, they weren't here the whole time. So, if you think about it, for a whole career, having a 403B match for 35 years, it turns out way better than 100 days of rate payment spread out, kind of a whole thing. But that's just a little insight. Doesn't really affect our decision here tonight. But there's some severance built in contract with it.
So, Josh and Jen, did you have any, any questions to clarify or any thoughts?
Yeah. So, these severances, I know you guys threw out a couple of numbers, but what are the, so, these get negotiated? Is that correct?
So, severances are sort of a separate issue, in my opinion. I mean, we can certainly talk about it. But yes, those are negotiated.
So, this, uh, early retirement, sorry.
No, that's okay.
Yep. These, these are going to be negotiated. If we, if we say we're going to do this, then they get negotiated?
No, they, they're trying to, so we're outside of contract negotiation. So, that's why we're calling in an MOA. It's a memorandum, memorandum of understanding or agreement for one year. Kind of, it's outside that contract. So, when you're outside of negotiation times, you have to do it in this form. So, they're asking for a one-year MOA that addresses this.
Yeah. Basically, anybody that, that fits the criteria that are set, that chooses to retire, take advantage of that incentive. We don't necessarily know what that number is, but they would be able to. Is it over the next, would it be a year, or is it a school year?
Well, when they retire at the June 6th or 7th, they're.
But I mean, it would be for.
We set a date and a parameter. They actually let the district.
You can start week 2020. Yes, 2020. Yes, when it was $10,000 instead of $14,000. So, you can, if you decide you're going to do it, that's the first decision. And then what isn't, if you would decide to do it? And last year, it wasn't.
So, what is the number if they decide to do it?
He decided to.
Decide, which will happen in the future. We can make it any amount we want. That was just historically, they were, were, you know. I see something different with that. This year's or not, they were all, usually they were on the 13 or 14.
Any other questions or thoughts? Okay. So, we'll eventually need either a motion and a second to move forward. Let's see. It's written as to move forward with an early retirement incentive package. Um, we don't have a motion or a second to move forward. Then that, same, we don't believe we should offer a retirement.
I'm sure I make a motion to provide a early retirement incentive.
I'll second it. Um, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Again, same sign.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. So, we have a three to three tie, which is not a majority. So, the motion fails with no majority. Okay. But it was a good discussion. Thanks for that. All right. We're going to move on to lane changes. And this is something that typically happens halfway through the year for people who have earned enough credits to make a lane change. So, we basically just need a motion and a second to accept the lane changes as they're presented on the board.
I'm sure I make a motion except they have their lane changes.
I'll second. A motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Again, same sign. Motion passes for the half-year lane changes. Then we have a music grant, um, from the St. Croix Valley Foundation, where I believe it was a middle school, um, music library, a $1,000 grant from St. Croix Valley Foundation that we need to accept.
I assume we'll have to accept that grant.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, accepting the grant, say aye.
Aye.
Again, same sign. I'm sorry. Did you have a discussion?
Yeah, I just wondered if, what, what is it used for? Is this a band, is it a middle school band or?
I think it's choral music, and it's updating the, the overall selection of music down the show, right? Sheet music, specifically, what they say.
Because music libraries is, we have to pay for all that.
Oh, I could, I'm sorry, I could.
It's okay. I'm helping you out.
Okay. So, we have a motion and a second. We voted on it, right?
Yeah. You need to do it. Is there anybody opposed?
Oh, is there anyone opposed? Except you. Thanks, Corey. Okay. So, we're moving on to a new. Okay, so we're moving on to a new contract, SRO contract, with the police commission for the officer that is, officer or officers?
Two.
Two, that are in our buildings. Anything we need to say about it?
No, we've, you know, it is an increase over previous and again, a lot of things are costing more money. So there certainly is an increase in that way. But we were collaborating with LAPD on this and the police commission. We have a great relationship with our SROs, they're available whenever we need them. Chief Schlumberm himself has been available whenever we needed them. You know, it's, it's a great partnership. As we know, safety in our schools is, is our number one priority. And it's great to have partners that we work with so closely and have done for quite some time to work with on this. So we are recommending its approval. And then again, we continue to appreciate that relationship and the opportunity to collaborate with, with our police commission and, and LAPD.
Any questions about that SRO contract? Okay, we'll need a motion and a second to.
No.
I'll second it. We have a motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Again, same sign.
I'm gonna abstain. I think that I probably have to, because I work for the entity commission, so.
Okay, court, uh, court sensor abstains, motion passes.
I'll have to back down on that.
Write your name down. Okay, we're moving on to the pay equity report. Attached is a notice that Chisau Land Schools have successfully submitted their 2023 pay equity report to the State of Minnesota. The unions have been notified and the notice is posted at the Public Library for up to 90 days. Any comments about the pay equity report?
Well, you know, it has to be done every three years, so this is, check this out for three years and.
We checked it all.
Yes.
Yep.
We did, we passed.
If that's what you're asking about, check it out.
You have to, you have to do the study every three years?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
I know there's been some public entities that have gotten in trouble for not keeping up with.
We passed, we passed.
Good. Yeah, testing. I'll motion to accept. Yep.
We need a session.
I second it.
Yeah, sure, they did.
Or did you?
Oh, Josh did.
Yeah.
He's right next to you.
There was pretty much.
We're actually going.
Yeah.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to pass the pay equity report, um, to approve that. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Again, same sign. That motion passes and everyone's reminding me I missed the calendar.
Nope.
Oh, it's next.
I started, I had to finish.
Oh, see. Calendar's next on here. And I was going by the paper.
So what is, how many are changes on the paper?
Which is not a legal document.
What did you just say with the?
Let's move on to the 25, 26 district calendar. We've, we've gotten the habit of approving a calendar a few years ahead so families and staff can make plans. So this is the calendar for 20, the proposed calendar for 25, 26. Any comments about it, Jen?
Well, it's kind of doing, and we're kind of in a pattern here, right? And then really the big things when you look at the calendars, where's Labor Day? Where is the Christmas break? Where's spring break? Where's the school year at? When's commencement? Those are kind of the big things you go in and then you kind of build around it. So we don't have anything new to report there. You can see this is the year, and you know, it depends on the year, but this is the year where Labor Day comes super early. So you can see we're at school already by September 2nd in 2025. Who knows, we're all being 2025. So that's when Labor Day is that year. So we'll start school there. And then you can see where Christmas break falls, you can see where spring break falls, and of course, where we would consider commencement. So again, nothing really earth shattering about that other than that, where things lay out, so.
You know, this is a formality, but this used to be a terrible bone of contention in the district. You say, "I'm trying to figure out when we're gonna have break." Now we just kind of moved on and approved it, so it's, and I like the layout. The layout is very.
That's Michelle. That's like a layout of it. One thing to keep in mind as board members too, and that said in the background, you can alter the calendar like we did in January when you're dealing with unforeseen circumstances and whatnot, you can alter the calendar. That is your prerogative to alter the calendar. Or assess the calendar, we work it. You know, so just working together to make sure we're addressing what comes up. This coming year, 23, 24, we approved that calendar two years ago. But that doesn't mean that there isn't something that might come up that we might have missed or maybe something changes. Things do happen, uh, you know, things do come along. There's legislation right now to put into a, a federal holiday for Juneteenth in, in June. Of course, that would impact our school calendar for your school year, but it does impact like summer school and things like that. So you, you just work with it as it comes. But we do approve three, you know, all three years out so that people can plan. Spring breaks, the big one they're looking at, and probably Christmas break. So where that's gonna be.
Okay, any other questions about the calendar? We'll need a motion, second to approve the 25, 26 calendar. I'll second it. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Again, same sign. Motion passes. All right, so, um, we need to, again, add a special meeting to talk about the budget in March. And we have a very busy March with interviews for superintendent candidates and so on. But the date we were looking for, we originally talked about, could we tack it on to one of the nights we're already here? But we decided to just pull on for the tall, in terms of length of time to tell. So I'd ask you to look at your calendars for Monday, March 27th, to see if we can add that special meeting on that date. Grab my calendar, so.
We're looking at 6:00.
Yes. Do you know how long the meeting will be?
Take it.
Do you know how long the meeting will be? I mean, it's somewhat unpredictable because it is about budget and sometimes people show up and want to talk to us and we have some stuff to wrestle with, but other times it's gone quickly as well. So it's hard to stage them. I, I prefer working it, I think.
Other, March 27th?
It's not, it's the 27th.
Monday, the 27th. Oh.
And does it, it needs to occur, we, because just in case there's some staff involved, we have to, we have to give them notice. We have to give them enough notice.
Correct, yeah. We would still, we would still be within our timeframe, we would, probably a week later, but that's kind of pushing it, so.
Yeah. So just so you know, just in case there would be any staff that would be impacted by a delay off or something, you have to give them notice by April, a date in April. So we can't keep pushing it off too much longer, we're gonna have to come up with a date.
Can we look at, I work on the 27th. I've pretty much burned most of my vacation.
And Jen, it doesn't work for her anymore.
Yeah. So can we look at the 29th, 30th, or 31st? Given you all three days, you're going. You're leaving on the 28th.
Okay, so here's an option. Uh, we could choose a different time of day, although we could, because we already have evening meeting on Tuesday, the 20th. You know?
Could we do, well, you said you don't recommend doing it before. Because that's what I was gonna ask, if we could do it before one of our other meetings.
We have to do it quite a bit before, because the time or phone is unpredictable when you're talking about budgets.
You compare, Jen, I mean, two hours?
But then if approaches.
I'll wait till the 11th or 12th to 13th morning. That's a long time.
Going into April?
Yeah.
I don't, we can't, because we can't notify anyone because of.
Could you go on, Jen, once you're in a meeting on the 27th?
At 7:00.
7:00?
Yeah.
Can we do, yeah, because I work at 5:00, so if we could do it really after noon.
Well, I'm coaching.
Yeah, I, I took the day off. Do we do before practice?
Could we do a morning?
Not so early, because I work until four in the morning. Do you do it at four in the morning?
We do it at four in the morning.
You want to go right after, don't?
We could, we could. Somebody's bringing coffee though. Noon? Is that? No. Good.
It's fine, and do we expect, like, if teachers want to come, then they can, they'll be.
All that time, well, true.
Yeah, we have people that would like to speak.
Right, so then that's hard.
So basically, what we're talking about here, and again, I think people have suspected in the district that if we didn't pass the levy to fall, would it be any budget, you know, reductions or budget adjustments that need to be made? There, there are some budget adjustments that need to be made. We don't predict that they're in the neighborhood size-wise or number-wise what we've done in the past. We, we, we have recommended we make some budget reductions or that type of thing. Typically, you would have people might want to speak to those. So on March 16th, your regular, or at least on March 16th, we would release a list of proposed reductions so people can review those. And then we typically given some time for people to, if they wanted to come and speak to the board about them and say, "Hey, I'm not real excited about this reduction," or "That's not, we don't think that's a great idea." You like to give people some more than form to give you feedback on what those reductions would be. Initially had said possibly March 20th, but you got such a busy week that week with the 21st and 22nd being superintendent interviews. That was our initial thought, was go on March 20th, because the previous week, our admin would be working with their teams to notify people if there were any reduction of staff that, that they need to be aware of. So the initial date was to go back to March 20th, but that would really push you as a board, 20, 21, 22, you're gonna be here until.
And I think, Jen, you can't do it. I'm on a town on 20th.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, this stinks, but what about Friday, the 24th? Friday night award meeting? I don't know, or we'd have to, I don't know.
Corey's working.
Is it illegal to do it on Saturday?
Boy, that would be a departure from our norm, but, um, who doesn't want to be at work maybe on Saturday? And then I wonder about, I mean, who wants to come talk with?
It's just such a terrible busy time.
Okay, so let me think. We have to be creative here.
Okay, so the 23rd is the staff award dinner.
Yes.
Can we do it at four o'clock?
The staff award dinner is not till six. So we.
I'm not leaving at four in the afternoon like you do.
So, how about five? That would give us an hour.
I could do that.
With five o'clock before the Wildcat Awards, because it's local. Five o'clock on the 23rd.
I imagine that you'll need to be here and there.
Yeah, that's awesome.
That's tough, man.
That's too challenging. You started at four on the 23rd?
No.
Oh, you started. Okay, well, we're gonna continue to be creative, um.
Yeah, 20, yeah. My staff just. What are you doing for them that year?
Well, where are we gonna be?
Someone's not.
I'll be in, uh, St., obviously. So, the 4th.
Okay. On the 28th, your final interview is the 28th.
We're not saying we're not gonna go, exactly which day, case.
Well, but, are you, well, that's up to you, but we could do a morning remembrance for you, but that's, you do entirely.
Depends on one day in the chat.
Yeah, and you wouldn't be able to.
We can't overnose. So, what does Wednesday, March 29th?
Thank you, Zach.
Oh, you're gone.
Well, it's possible you might have to do a meeting when you're not a board member.
Yeah.
I have to say that question.
So if we did March 20th, Jen will be gone.
20th and 27th.
20th and the 27th. Do we consider, do we make the 20th?
It's gonna be out. If they're talking to people and then we pass it, I would say we want to meet as soon as possible.
On the 16th is when we're gonna announce initially.
Yeah, so it's, the longer we go, the more ramblings it's gonna be. I say we try to do it on the 20th. Quick, you want to, you want to be quick, because it's gonna be out there.
Yeah, on the 20th, Jen, you have, you're out of town.
We are the out of town.
Okay, yeah. So it's, again, you're gonna find a date where someone's gonna be gone.
It kind of looks like.
So the 20th?
So, uh, 20th. Does that seem reasonable? 20th at 6 o'clock.
Corey, your working schedule. I'm off then. 6:00 AM, 8:00 PM.
Not funny. So we don't have, we actually need a motion and a second to call for that special meeting on the 20th at 6:00 PM.
A motion?
I'll second it.
And I've got to change this, so hold on.
Yeah, we gotta change the motion.
March 20th. At 6:00 PM.
Right.
At the district office.
Right. All in favor of that change, say aye. Against, same sign. Motion passes, Corey, do you have another question?
No, I was asking if Brenda was.
Okay, and so the work of the war continues. We also need, excuse me. We have, have we not moved on that March 2nd date yet? We have not.
We haven't officially set that work session.
Okay, we need a motion and a second to officially set that March 2nd work session from 2:00 to 4:00 o'clock, in which MSBA will be coming proportionately to do interview training and so on. We have a motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Again, same sign. That motion passes. And then, um, I do believe it might be smart for us to set a work session for April because of our levy not passing. Um, and lots of, in order to report with our budget, we really need to have a discussion about what our plan's gonna be at the school district in terms of levy. So painful as it is, I think we need to find a work session date in April, and April should be later, so.
April 5th, 6:00 PM? An dentist appointment that afternoon, so I'll be.
Our regular working means what date?
20th.
20th. Well, you don't get back until eight. My goodness.
Okay, so.
Your retirement is.
Yes. So, and again, it's a work session. We can, we can alter the time if we need, it is an open meeting.
Stay away from Tuesdays and Thursdays.
Okay.
I'll go it.
So we could do the 10th or the 12th potentially? Oh, that's.
That doesn't exist on Monday.
I was thinking with 12th?
12th, what about Wednesday?
Well, when, when will the pre-work be?
Pre-work will be on the 13th, so you could do that back to back.
You want to, we've got a, we've got principal at home, so.
I have my, I had a recheck on my hip that day till five.
So let's go back to Wednesday, 12th.
No, Wednesday, the 12th, that's when I have to recheck.
13th is what I was thinking.
And you were thinking in the morning?
No.
Pre-work done is in the morning. Okay, good. And recently it currently is. At, from 7, at 7:00.
7:00.
Three of the board members will be here at 7:00. But.
Okay, so.
Seriously, you guys need to stay away from Tuesday, Thursday.
Yeah, those are.
So do I.
So what about Wednesday at 6:00, like our normal time? 6, the 12th?
Time of the day, no.
My appointment's 3:45 at 4:45, so I'll be house.
Not good.
I didn't want to throw out a date, and I lost. No, I think we can have all of April, we can do it.
I mean, we could do a 12th, but not at 6:00, yeah, if I do that, we can do that.
Well, there's anything, any time work, the 10th through the 13th, 17th, not through the.
I could do noon. Early afternoon.
Early afternoon on the 12th or 13th, Jen, or Josh, is that working?
Yeah.
So what if you went like 1:00 on Thursday, 13th? How's that work with scheduling? Are you going somewhere that day, traveling?
13th, we're, we're home.
1:00.
Yeah, I just have to be in Forest Lake. Yeah, I just have to be in force late. Ground shooting.
At what time?
Well, you got, usually there at 3:00.
And so what if you went, what if you went at 12:00, wouldn't it work to lunch?
About that, you could do that.
12:00 on the 13th of April, then we'll put a baked potato bar together.
So we'll plan for two hours. How about that? Put an end time so people can get where they need to be.
So that's new. Is, is a motion for that?
So we need a motion for an April 13th working session for noon to. And I have a motion and yes.
I'll second it.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Again, same sign. Motion passes.